Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the White Marsh Board of Supervisors meeting to order for April 13th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to provide United States, America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right, I guess we can start with announcements. J.C.?
Thank you, Fran. White Marsh Township received a distinguished honor by the Arbor Day Foundation with the Tree City USA designation to honor the township's commitment to effective urban forest management. This is a tribute to the entire township staff, along with the volunteers on the Shade Tree Commission, Environmental Advisory Board, along with Colonial Canopy Trees for their active roles in caring for and planting trees throughout the township. White Marsh Township also received the Citizens Communication Award of Excellence from Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors for our outstanding efforts and achievement in citizen communications in the category of cable TV programs, specifically for the snow emergencies public service announcement. Great job by Rob Brown, our media production coordinator, for his creativity with the script and his work behind the camera. Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, is White Marsh Township Day at Victory Fields from noon to 5:00 p.m. Come out and enjoy the food, music, games, and prizes with your neighbors and friends from White Marsh. In recognition of Arbor Day, the township and Colonial Canopy Trees will host a community tree planting event at Miles Park on Saturday, April 29th, 2023, from 9:30 to 12:00 noon. Volunteers with shovels, gloves, and a good pair of boots are needed to help. Two events to ease your tax stress. On April 18th at Miles Park Playground, Kona Ice will provide free Kona ice from 3:30 to 4:30 to cool you off. And finally, a representative from Berkheimer Associates will be at the township office on Wednesday, April 26th, and Friday, April 28th, to save you a stamp. Receive the 2% discount and collect your real estate tax payments. Please note that April 30th is the deadline to receive the 2% discount.
Thanks, J.C. I'd like to invite our Park and Rec Director, Tom Blumstrom, the great Tom Blumstrom, up to the podium. He's without a character this year, which I don't know what's going on. Is that good news or bad news?
Well, the Minions, they're making another Minion movie, so he's on set. And Cookie Monster, he's the Cookie Monster for a reason. He had a whole lot of cookies yesterday, Easter weekend, stomach's a little upset, didn't want to bring them out. But because we have such an exciting Township Day this year, we were able to get one of our legends to come out of the woodwork for us. So if you could put your hands together for me and just say, "Miles, Miles, Miles." Ladies and gentlemen, Miles the Gecko has joined the whole thing. And the legend will be out to help us out this weekend, next weekend. Well done. All right. So thank you so much for having me this evening and having Miles the Gecko out. Our department is honored to be out in front of you folks and be serving the community. As you mentioned earlier, White Marsh Township Day is Saturday, April 2nd, at Colonial District, School Districts, Victory Fields from 12 to 5:00. The event is rain or shine. Our team striving for a happy and safe experience for all of our attendees. We're going to have hand washing stations out, hand sanitizer porta-potties, spaced-out seating, spaced-out vendor layouts, which should be wonderful. We would very much like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your support and also the Colonial School District as our host. I am super pumped to let you folks know that just a giant appreciation to our 67 partners and sponsors that we've been able to get, and we've been promoting them throughout the community, but tremendous, tremendous support. You're going to see a document pop up, and it has everybody's logo at some point, so enjoy when you glance up there. In addition, we worked with the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Montgomery County to reach over 700 participants, members, and really doing our best to get the word out. The Park and Rec team was met with Colonial School District officials back following the last event, again, in March of this year, onsite. Then we had an onsite meeting April 5th of this year with emergency services, police, Public Works, and school district representatives. So we will meet again the day before the final of the day, just to make sure all logistics are good and everybody's feeling one of our best, best place at that moment. We also have over 100 total registered vendors for the event. That's the most we've ever had. Businesses, crafters, food vendors, nonprofit, religious, political, community, school groups, clubs, and emergency service. Everybody likes hearing who the food folks are, so it's Batio's Ice Cream, Menagerie Foods, Sweet Thanks Nuts and Candy, Amici Vicianato, Cousins Maine Lobster, Hardy Funnel Cake, Street Side Barbecue, Mashaba, Kona Ice Get Waffle, Tricycle Cafe, Coffee Truck, and Flat Belly Veg. So we're all excited there. For our entertainment, got a bunch of entertainment booked. I know you're very excited. We have two magicians, a juggler, two clowns doing balloons, a face painter, stiltswalker, three characters, Elsa Spider-Man, and Miles the Gecko will be out. We have the Aqua String Band, which is a members band from Philadelphia, the Eagles Pep Band, and new this year, we're going to have a Strolling Barber Shop Quartet. So making it fun and different. The rides we have, there's a whole slew that a lot of you remember, Vertical Rush, Meltdown, Mechanical Shark, Rockwall, a whole slew there. We mixed it up with a couple of things. We have Rock and Roll Racing, it's going to be back, Funfields, Football Combine, Whiffleball Home Run Contest, and our Bubble Land. Happy to have the Advisory Committee for the EAB coming out, and Shade Tree Commission, they'll be sharing their own tent, and excited to have them out with their environmental and nature information to share with the community. Also going to have inflatable axe-throwing, slippery slope, mini basketball, shooter connect four basketball, labyrinth, four-person balance game, three-in-one sports midway, and those are a bunch of the ones we have for the little ones, and we give out little prizes and stuff for the kids. Publicity, we've tried to be all over the place, love using the LED sign on the corner. I think it's really helped with the sponsors and the vendors and getting word out to folks. We put out lawn signs today. We're doing Instagrams Monday. This is hot off the presses. Monday is going to be one of our discount last days, so if you come in Monday to buy a wristband, you get a 10% discount, so your pre-advanced price would be only $18, instead of the pre-advanced now is $20, and the day off is $25. So look forward to hopefully that being a good boost for us. The shuttle bus we're going to have circling around that day as well. Just a huge, huge thank you to Public Works Police, Fire Marshals Group, EMS, everybody. It's a team effort at White Marsh to put this on. It's not the Park and Rec Department, it's not Miles Gecko, it's everybody together. So huge thank to them, and again, to the Board of Supervisors for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. How do I do?
I just want to make sure that Miles the Gecko and all the other Geckos know they should not be selling any insurance. I know you like to do that.
That's his cousin.
It's his cousin. Just want to make sure, okay. Tom, that sounds great.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Really excited. If anybody's interested in volunteering, we can always use volunteers at the end of the day to help with cleanup, so if you know of anybody that's looking to jump in and do something, that's always a big help. But thanks again, we really appreciate you having us out tonight.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Charlie, thanks for punching that up.
You just can't help yourself, Fran.
Yeah, everybody's thanking you.
It was a slam dunk.
I'm sorry.
Not cheesy enough. All right, as everyone heard, we have Arbor Day is coming up, and I have a proclamation I'd like to read now. So proclamation for Arbor Day 2023. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Fran McCusker, Chair of the White Marsh Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, as Arbor Day in the Township of White Marsh, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Resolved this 13th day of April 2023. Thank you. Now we'll go over to J.C. for the library proclamation.
So National Library Week is coming up. It's April 23rd to April 29th, and in honor of that, I want to read this proclamation. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life, whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all, whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships, whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals, whereas libraries are cornerstone of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Whereas the William Jean's Memorial Library and Nicholas and Athena Carabot Center for Learning is celebrating their 90th anniversary this month. They have been serving this community at the same location on Joshua Road since 1970, and they are pleased to welcome everyone. They abide by the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights and support the ALA's Freedom to Read Statement. The mission of the William Jean's Memorial Library is to be a resource center that serves the diverse and changing needs of the community by providing materials, programs, and services for education, enrichment, and enjoyment. They look forward to seeing you at the library this week and all year long. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors, proclaim National Library Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023, and congratulate the William Jean's Memorial Library and Nicholas and Athena Carabot Center for Learning on their 90th anniversary, proclaim this 13th day of April 2023. And I am fortunate to be the board liaison for the library, and I am thrilled that you're celebrating your 90th anniversary and proud of all that you do, and you're having a special event to celebrate the 90th anniversary. I don't know if you, Lisa Clancy, who is the director of the library who is here, or Carly Gryz, who's on the board, would like to say anything about the event on May 20th?
Good evening and thank you. On Saturday, May 20th, the library will celebrate its 90th anniversary, and we were pleased to form a partnership with the Highlands Mansion and Gardens, and we're going to hold it there. It'll be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the evening. Tickets went on sale an hour ago, and we're really, Carly and the board have done an amazing job helping to plan this event. We're going to food, music, wine, so this is an event for adults, but there'll be something for families later this year, and we're really excited about that location. I'm told the goats will be available for those of you who know the Highlands, so we're very excited to have it in that location. Thank you.
And just a quick question about the tickets. I know I'm going to go and get mine tonight. Will you be selling them at the library as well?
Yes, you can purchase them online or you can purchase them in the library. We will not be selling them at the door at the event, so you have to purchase them in advance, but yes, come on to the library. We're 90 years young, as we like to say, and we're not just a warehouse of books, so come see everything new and different we've got at the library.
And we'll see you also at Township Day?
Yes, we will. We will be at Township Day. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Carly.
Congratulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for an application of Goat's Beard III LLC, 1100 Hector Street, for a liquor license transfer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair McCusker. What we have before us is a public hearing, and then later, if the board is so satisfied, eventually a resolution for approval of Goat's Beard Transfer Liquor License from Otto's and Horsham to White Marsh Township. You saw, I'm going to mark a couple of exhibits here. T1 will be a copy of the advertisement of this public hearing as required by the liquor code and our newspaper of general circulation. T2 will be a copy of the application by Mr. Donahue from Lamb McElane, and T3 will be a copy of the resolution that you later have before you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Donahue to make a brief presentation and answer any questions.
Mr. Kilkenny, thank you very much. To the board, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Vince Donahue from Lamb McElane. I represent the Goat's Beard III LLC. The principals are here with me tonight. We have Sean Coyle here and Michael McCrory, and we also have Eric Carlson here from Alliance, who is our landlord. We have a lease in place with them, and we have an agreement to acquire the liquor license from Otto's. That's coming from Horsham, and we are proposing to bring it into Conchahocken, to the Spring Mill Creative Center, and under state law, we need to get a resolution from this board approving the intermunicipal transfer. We are here tonight for the transfer of PLCB Restaurant License R-11927. As I said, the applicant is Goat's Beard III LLC. Sean and Michael currently own and operate two other restaurants, each called The Goat's Beard. One is in Mannion on Main Street in Philadelphia. The other is on North Wayne Avenue in Ratner Township in the heart of Wayne. Sean himself is active full-time in the restaurant industry. He's a lifer. He's been in the restaurant industry his entire life. His parents were in the restaurant industry, and so he knows what he's doing, and Michael and Sean run a very, very tight ship. The location of this site is Building B at the Spring Mill Creative Campus on 1100, at 1100 Hector Street. This is most recently known as Zoe's Cafe. The site is zoned in the heavy industrial district, and it's part of the Riverfront Development District overlay in which restaurants are permitted use. As I said earlier, the site is owned by Alliance HP Spring Mill Property LLC, which is a single-purpose entity owned by Alliance HP. That's the firm that owns the building. At this point, I would like to bring up Sean Coyle for testimony in connection with the hearing. Sean?
Can you speak for me, please?
Sean Coyle, S.E.A.N.C.O.Y.L.B.
Majorate, you swear or affirm the testimony. You're about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and open with the truth. Thank you.
Sean, why don't you tell the board briefly about your history in the restaurant industry?
Well, I'll make it brief. I've been in the restaurant business my entire life. My family owned restaurants since I was in the city, since I was a kid. Then my family owned a place called Binion Flynn's, there's a bunch of them in northeast and Wayne, Pennsylvania. I grew up in Wayne, Berwyn area. I took over my first place when I was 26 in Mannion. I had a place in Butler, Butler Ave and Ambler, and I came back, I sold those and came back 10 years ago, and Mac and I purchased a place in Mannion, and I started the career over again. So now we have two running pretty well, and it's kind of in my blood. I've been a dishwasher, I've been a busboy, I do it all.
When did your restaurant in Mannion go?
We're 10 years in March, so just turned 10.
And how about in Ratner Township in Wayne?
Will be seven years next month.
How much time do you personally spend in these restaurants?
A lot. Probably between 25 and 30 hours each place a week.
Just speak briefly about the management teams you put in place in each of your sites as you open them up.
Well, I have, I keep saying the word stable, but I have a good stable of GMs and chefs and sous chefs that we've brought onboard for this particular restaurant, Conchahocken. So as of right now, we're training them in kind of what we do, kind of how we do it, you know, with recipes and just processes, pretty much. But I usually have three or four managers at a time besides myself, who as operator, I'm there a lot to make sure that I, you know, keep them all in check.
Has the city of Philadelphia ever issued any violations in connection with your restaurant in Mannion?
No, sir.
Has the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board issued any violations?
No, sir.
Same two questions for Ratner Township. Has Ratner Township cited you?
No.
Liquor Control Board in Ratner Township ever cited? Why don't you talk about what you do at your restaurants to prevent underage people from consuming alcohol?
We are, all of our front-of-house staff is Ramp certified. We card if you're under 35, if you look under 35. We're pretty tight on that because the bartenders especially know that they have a fine if we get caught doing anything wrong. All of our back-of-house, we have at least three, whether it's chef, sous chef, myself, or GM, they're all ServSafe certified, which is a every-five-year class we have to take to make sure we keep all of our, you know, food in check, temperatures in check, and make sure we store things properly, make sure food's safe.
You mentioned Ramp certification. Ramp is an acronym for Responsible Alcohol Management Program?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you just talk a little bit about what that means?
It's an online class where, again, if someone's visibly intoxicated, there's ways to kind of go around it and handle the situation in proper ways.
We're going to turn to some slides here. As you can see, that's their logo. Sean and Mike spend a lot of money on branding and a lot of money on the presentation of their brand to the public. Here are just some photos of the inside of their restaurant in Mannion. If any of you have ever been to the old Thomas's in Mannion, that's been The Goat's Beard for the last almost 10 years. Here's some pictures of their Wayne site. And Sean, just talk a little bit about the menu. This is kind of tough to read for anybody, but just generally describe the menu.
It's inventive American. We take kind of items you would see at any restaurant, any pub, and our chefs are very cognizant of making them a little more interesting. So we also have the Detroit-style pizza, which just started about two years ago during the pandemic, which has kind of changed the trajectory of what we do. It's a thicker, more flaky style pizza that has just gone off the charts. So basically, our menu, it doesn't pigeonhole us into any specific cuisine. For instance, we're putting a halal chicken, a roasted chicken on our new menu coming up next month. This is obviously just a little bit old, but in a week or two, we'll have a new menu coming up. It's just inventive, it's just creative. We try to keep it fresh and a little bit different.
Sean, why don't you just very briefly describe some of the renderings that we're looking at now? These are renderings that you guys had done for the site under consideration tonight.
Yeah, right there, our back is facing, like where if you're sitting at the bar stool, our back is facing Hector Street. If you know the property, there's an entry to the right and to the left side back there. So if you enter on Hector Street, you would walk to the left to see this bar area.
And that's the same angle?
Yeah, so now we're looking towards Lee Street.
This is part of the outdoor?
Part of the outside renovation, yeah.
There will be, the outdoor patio will be part of the service area once we have PLCB approval in place?
Yeah, that's our outside seating area.
This is the rendering from, what is the street?
That's Hector and Lee.
And that concludes our presentation. Supervisors, at this point, we'd like to invite you to ask any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any board questions?
I'm just curious, is the TV sports bar kind of atmosphere there?
We don't, we're not considered a sports bar, but we do have TVs. I think we have three or four in the bar slash lounge area. Dining room will keep it without TVs.
And the alcohol, like local brew pubs, are you going to brew your own?
We do a lot of work with Conchahocken Brewery. Ironically, they're a block away. Also, yeah, we try to keep it, we're a whiskey bar, so we do have a lot of whiskeys. But as far as beers and wines, well, beer, we definitely do mostly local drafts, all kinds of bottles and cans.
Okay. Thanks.
I've been to your location in Mannion.
Thank you.
And many years ago, before the pandemic, but enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Is the menu the same at all three locations?
This menu's going to be kind of a modernized version of what we've done the last decade, but yes, similar. Again, my new chef, he's very into a bunch of different cuisines, so we're going to integrate those, and I don't like using the word fusion, but there'll be some interesting items, but we will keep the basic just the same.
Thank you.
What will your hours of operation be?
We'll be open for lunch, Monday through Friday, so I think we're going to try to go from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 or 11:00 on Monday through Friday evening. We might stay up until midnight Fridays and Saturdays, and we're going to do brunch, I believe, Saturdays and Sundays, but we're going to hold off on that until I see exactly how busy we are and if we can handle it.
Anything else?
See if there's any public?
Any public comment?
Sure.
Come on up, please. State your name.
My name's Aileen Manning. I'm sorry about the question. Aileen, E.I.L.E.E.N. Thank you. My question to these gentlemen is, where do you plan for these cars to park?
Good question there. We have a?
The front, the front lot, it has a gate that goes down on it.
Yeah, after 4:00, that gate will be open to us. We have from 4:00 p.m. to, I believe, every day, it's open for us. I think there's 160 parking spaces there.
And they'll enter that way, not off of?
Off of Hector, and then I believe exit out to Hector.
Okay, because that corner of Hector and Lee, have you driven it?
Yes.
It's very tight to make a right into there.
Yeah, also, yeah, so most of our guests will be parking on the Hector side.
In the parking lot?
Yes, by the main line of health system where the gate is, so that gate will go from?
Because I live in the next block, and I have lots of problems with people parking in the back, blocking my driveway, tractor trailers, there's signs that say no parking, and they still park there.
No, I'm familiar with that concept. I sent from Mannion location.
Okay.
Our guests will be parked away from you.
On that? Okay, all right, thank you. That was my main concern.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, question?
Suggestion to close the hearing?
Thanks, Sean. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. I was planning on calling Miles as my next witness, but he took off on me.
Thank you.
He had a lot of insurance to sell, I'm going to stick with that.
Yeah, keep going.
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-11, authorizing the liquor license transfer for the Goat's Beard III LLC 1100 Hector Street?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries. Congratulations, good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck to you. What's the timeframe? When is this going to be open?
September.
We'll see you then.
Good luck.
Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from March 9, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1076, authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement between the Township and Verizon PA LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Talked a little bit about this last month. This is our cable franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC. It's one of two cable franchise agreements that the Township has, the other is with Comcast. This contract expired in 2018, five years ago. Took five years to negotiate this contract with Verizon. We were, we contracted with Cohen Law Group out of Pittsburgh, who their background is in this type of renewal for franchise agreements and communications. The current agreement is, some of the highlights, it's a five-year agreement. It includes a $15,000 grant that we received, franchise grant, and it also allows for high-definition government channels, something that was important to us as we kind of move forward. It's sometimes difficult to see in standard definition. One of the unfortunate pieces of this is with regards to an FCC ruling that there is actually no more free cable that they provide. That is being challenged by class action of municipalities, but as of right now, they will not offer that free. That'll be something that I'll have to pay unless the court overturns the FCC ruling, and then that would be an option for us. Again, five-year agreement and something that's taken a long time for a lot of various reasons in trying to deal with Verizon and get them to the table to actually get this negotiation and this contract in place. So we're recommending authorization of the ordinance so that we have this agreement in place and that some of those highlights can actually come to fruition following the execution of the contract.
Thank you. Glad you brought up the free cable situation. I came up today and clarified.
No more free cable, unfortunately.
Any other board comment? Public comment? Hearing none, Mr. Miller.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair Nestor, I'm sorry. Chair McCusker?
Yes.
Old habits.
I don't know whether to take that personally or...
Old habits.
All right. Ordinance carries. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1027, amending for chapter 94 residential rental license requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Again, this is an update to our rental inspection ordinance. We have contracted with Keystone Municipal Services, they're a third-party inspection agency. One of their tasks is to take over our rental inspection program. Upon review of the inspection program, they realized that there was a lot of administrative items that needed updating. There was a lot, there wasn't a lot of continuity with regards to the amendment. Therefore, some of the things that were in there in the old ordinance, it had actually the finance director as the enforcement officer for this. Speaking with Kevin, he's very busy with our finances, so we needed to make sure that was turned over to the third party. Also, we have that every rental property will be registered and inspected every two years. There was some inconsistencies. If you had over 100 units, it was three years. We wanted everything consistent there, as well as having the White Marsh Building Code and Appeals Board be the body that's in place that if there is any appeals. So it was a lot of just administrative updating that we needed to put in place at the recommendation of Keystone. This was reviewed, and we're recommending authorization of the amended ordinance at this time.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1028, authorizing the approval of a refinancing to the 2018 Township general obligation bond?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Again, this is something that we've been talking about pretty much for the entire 2023. Recall that we had our financial advisor, PFM, in at our first workshop meeting in February, where he reviewed with the board that our 2018 bonds call date would come this fall in 2023. As a result, it's a period of time where we could refinance at a lower interest rate and take advantage of some lower interest rates and obtain some savings in our 2018 bonds. Also, we have a 2014 bank loan that is something that we are also examining to see if we can find and fix a rate, that's a floating rate bank loan. And if we can fix a rate that makes sense, that would be something that would tie into this entire refinancing. We worked with them. We've also engaged a bond counsel. We have on the call Pat Scott, who is bond counsel with Obermeyer, who is working on behalf of the Township and prepared the ordinance for the Township and working with PFM and our underwriter. This will allow, this is an administrative piece of any kind of bond refinancing that's a debt ordinance. We cannot go and refinance until the call date. We have 90 days before that. It's in the summer, I believe, in like August could be the earliest that we could do it. But the point of doing this now is that if we see rates that are advantageous to the Township, we don't have to sit and miss that window because we're waiting for the ordinance to be adopted. We have this piece already in place. We can move forward with any type of refinancing that makes sense and would provide us savings to the Township. So that is what this will do tonight. It'll allow us one of those important administrative pieces that we could take on debt during this refinancing. Pat, did I miss anything or anything else that you want to add?
No, that was a great summary. Thanks so much. The only thing I might add is the ordinance is set up so that the two series of bonds, the 2018 and the bank loan, could be refunded at different times. So it depends on kind of where the market is, but the financial advisors have said there might be some advantage to be had by refunding one then refunding the other. And this ordinance would allow the Township the flexibility to do that. Other than that, the summary is great, and I don't have anything to add unless you guys have questions.
Thank you. All right, any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. And it's carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the settlement agreement between White Marsh Township and The Hill at White Marsh related to the vesting period for their development product, project?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. This is a settlement from litigation that arose out of the vesting period that the board authorized back in December of 2021. The board authorized at that time a resolution for approximate one-year extension till the end of 2023. At that time, The Hill sued the Township for that decision. Since that time, we have been in discussions with The Hill in order to settle that litigation, which we've come to terms in the settlement, which is before you. One of the next acts that you will consider as part of this settlement is a five-year extension of the vesting period. That would be until December 31, 2028. Why five years? That was their request, in which they feel they can then complete the construction of their project. That includes the renovations to the main medical center at The Hill, in addition to the remaining two building, residential buildings, for a total of 5.3 have already been built. Also, releases the Township if, and the third part is if there is any extension beyond December 31 of 2028, the first step would be, without attorneys, a discussion with The Hill to see if an extension past 2028 could be, come to an agreement. If that is not the case, then it would go to the attorneys, it would go to a neutral arbitrator, and then it would go to mediation at that time. Hopefully, we don't get to that, but it lays out how the process would take place, again, if they would need additional time to complete their construction project beyond the five-year vesting period of December 31, 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-12, granting a five-year vesting rights extension for SLD number 03-12, The Hill at White Marsh 4000 Fox Hound Drive, Phase Two to December 31, 2028?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, do you need to go into this again?
This is, again, this is a five-year till December 31, 2028 for them to complete construction of their project, as previously explained.
Thank you. Any, any board comment on this or public comment? All right, Mr. Miller, you can call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-13, authorizing changes to the fee schedule related to rental inspection fees to be consistent with the new residential rental license ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. As part of the ordinance amendment that you already adopted this evening, the second piece of this is an updated fee schedule related to our rental inspections. What we have in here is fees that have to go with the program cycle. So what it does is it encourages people to sign up early. If they sign up early, it's at a lesser rate. By that, I mean if you sign up by April 1st, it's $80, June 30th, 100, June, after June 30th, it's 125. So that we hopefully incentivize people to sign up early, pay a lesser fee, and then we can perform that inspection. Again, recall that the inspection's every two years, it's not annually. There's some other fees there that are associated with it that needed to be updated. Our fees are updated by resolution, and we're recommending approval of these amended fees to the rental inspection program.
Thank you, makes sense. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, Mr. Miller, please call a roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries, okay. Do I have a motion to allocate $1,201.52 in donations received from the Spring Shredding Day to Spring Mill Fire Company for volunteering their services and coordinating activities on the day of the event?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. McCusker. Another successful Spring Shredding Day, had a lot of vehicles come through there, estimated over 325 vehicles that came through. Again, people were very generous, it's free, but they do accept donations. We rotate our emergency service providers. In this case, it was Spring Mill Fire Company. Their volunteers came out and were very helpful, along with Jim and Sandy Sangrelli, who always participates, and he's an employee here at the Township. Donations were in the amount of $1,201.52, and recommending that we authorize a check to Spring Mill Fire Company in that amount.
Great. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize opting into the National Opioid Settlement Agreement and authorizing the Township manager to execute the necessary documents for this agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. We did this again back in December 2021, similar, where the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania entered into settlements with pharmaceutical companies. In this case, it was Teva, Allegra, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart this time. And each political subdivision gets to decide if they want to opt in and be eligible for potential funding related to this epidemic. We did this, opted in back in 2021. We're recommending that we opt in this time. There's really no downside to it for the Township, but we would have to notify by April 18th if we are opting in or not.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm hitting it too early. What argument's on that? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the following individual to Board's commissions? Megan Griffin Shelley, Media Communications Advisory Board, term ending December 31, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Megan is here. Megan, do you want to come up and say a few words? It's good to see you. Thanks for waiting.
No worries, it's all interesting. Hi, I'm Megan. I just wanted to say, so fortunate enough to be approved that I, you know, thank the supervisors, and I had the opportunity to meet the other media advisory board members. They were super friendly, dedicated, and I'm just excited to get to work with them on behalf of the Township that I've called home my whole life, so.
Thanks, Megan. It was great to see you there at the meeting. And Megan came in and she fit in immediately with the group. She started jumping in and everybody was getting some activities together, we're talking about Township Day, and you're going to be a great addition, so thanks for your time to volunteer for us.
Thank you.
All right.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You just can't help yourself.
Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 7251 Willow Lane versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the increase assessment for 2023, requiring a payment of $884.54 to the Township for real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. Every once in a while, we get one that we're actually owed money. It's usually the assessment goes down, they're owed a refund. In this case, the assessment went up, therefore, there's more money coming to the Township in the amount of $884.54 for the year 2023.
All right. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number three for River Place, 901 Washington Street, in the amount of $221,002.47?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This is, as you said, escrow release number three.
This is, as you said, escrow release number three. This is the Townhome Development on Washington Street down by Schuylkill River. Our office inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plans, and we're recommending the release of $221,002.47. And after this release, there will be remaining in escrow
Thank you.
How far through the project are they?
They're really doing a lot of earthwork at this time. There's a pretty large retaining wall. No buildings have gone up, but that should be coming soon. It looks like a different place.
Wow.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $818,856.94 and payroll totaling $973,840.76, and pension paid costs totaling $8,378.31 for March 2023?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to the public comment period. Any public comment? Ron?
Ron CEO of 2056 Hillside wrote, "Just want to commend the board and anyone who had their hands in the pot with the new interactive zoning map. I had a chance to use it several times this past week. Made things a whole lot easier to navigate through. Wonderful, but kudos to all that had a part of that." Too early, I contacted him personally and let him talk to you.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Any board comment? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry. Oh, executive. We had an executive meeting tonight before the meeting discussing.
Real estate.
Real estate and litigation.
And personnel.
And personnel. Lots of things. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Good night.
Good night.
Good night, White Marsh.